Schools, June twenty seventh, twenty twenty two. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public and is not to be considered a public meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Mrs. Anderson?
Present.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Present.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
I'm here.
Okay, stand for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the board members have had the agenda ahead of time and uh so is there anything that you all would like to change or add? Okay. Can I have acceptance of the agenda for the June twenty seventh, twenty twenty two regular meeting?
Second.
Well, I guess there's no questions. Can we have roll call, please?
Certainly. Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay. The board members have had a chance to look at the minutes of the meeting held on May the sixteenth and the special meeting held on May the twenty third. Does anybody have any additions or corrections to? Okay, can we have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Second. I'm assuming you don't have any questions. Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Special orders, uh, Mount Healthy Teachers Association?
There's no report.
You have any communications or announcements?
No.
Okay, I forgot my report, so there's no great old board report. But I know Julie got hers.
I do. Yeah.
Okay, uh, just two items tonight. Uh, this just came down today, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled that coaches and presumably other personnel, although that wasn't spelled out, cannot be prohibited from praying at a public school event even if students join them. The case arose from a case in Washington, from a, oh, I didn't proofread very well, from a case in Washington State where a coach, a football coach, I believe it was, was dismissed. He was praying on the field at games. Students were joining him. The district asked him to stop, said that it was, you know, you could do that in private if he wanted to, but on the field was inappropriate. Um, he stopped for a while and then he started back up again and the district did not renew his contract and he sued. Made it all the way to the Supreme Court and today they found that he had a First Amendment right to free speech to pray at the event even if students join him. The school district had argued that this was a violation of the Establishment Clause of the First Amendment, generally referred to as the separation of church and state. Uh, but the board found, or the board, the Supreme Court found in favor of the coach and said that prayer at public school events is okay even if students join in. Uh, the second item is House Bill ninety nine on the arming of teachers. On June thirteenth, Governor Mike DeWine signed this bill into law. It allows teachers to carry handguns in schools and reduces the number of training hours required from seven hundred to twenty-four. It will still be up to local school boards whether or not to allow teachers to be armed. And just for a momentary editorializing, I don't know if anybody else feels like they're living in the Twilight Zone right now, but but it is up to school boards, so if the school boards say no, then it's no. Uh, both chambers of the State Assembly are currently on recess to allow for campaigning for the upcoming August primaries, so there's not really much else to report at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, report of the treasurer.
Thank you. You received your bills for April and May of twenty-two. I'd like to recommend their acceptance.
Becky, can you speak up a little? We've got these fans.
You received your April and May schedule of bills and I'd like to recommend their acceptance.
So moved.
Bryant, second.
Oh. Okay.
Ms. Bryant?
Ms. Bryant.
Tim, would you speak up too? I never hear you, although they say you're talking, but I don't hear you. Okay, you have any questions? Do we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Item B is a recommendation to accept the financial statements for April and May of twenty-two. I'd like to recommend their acceptance.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Bryant, second.
Do you have any questions? Can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, this C is a recommendation to amend and approve the twenty twenty-two appropriations within the amended and approved certificate of estimated resources.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Anderson.
Yeah, I hear her dirt. Y'all have any questions, Becky? Can we have roll call, please?
Yes. Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item D is a recommendation to adopt temporary appropriations for FY twenty-three equal to a hundred percent of fund expenditures from FY twenty-two effective seven one twenty-two. This does not include federal funds because those change with the new fiscal year.
Okay. Y'all? Do we have a motion? Second?
Second.
Anderson.
Any questions? Can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item E is authorization to allow me to make any advances or transfers of funds as may be required to close out FY twenty-two.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Turner.
Turner.
Do you have any question?
Okay.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. And I believe that's how I have it, right?
Okay, next we'll have the superintendent's report.
Thank you. So tonight we have several new staff members with us and so we wanted to introduce some of them. And I'm gonna start with Bryce Blanton. He is joining us as our public relations person, coming to us from Goshen and spent a lot of time there working on IT, their alumni groups. So we're really excited to have him joining us. I'm gonna let Reem introduce Mr. Terrell. Great, thank you. And we have Cassidy, she is joining our staff of North Elementary and she will be working with Lisa Smith. And you're coming to us from Hamilton County ESC. I knew you'd been with Lisa at some point, but I wasn't sure where. So we're super excited. She even joined us for our administrative retreat, even though she wasn't official yet. She went ahead and joined us and so we were really appreciative of that. We have Ms. Connie Solano and Connie is joining us and her title will be under Performance and Accountability. And we are thrilled to have Connie lives for data and we are ready to start doing deep dives in our district on looking at our data and where are those pockets that we can really improve? And Connie's expertise is going to help us move in that direction. So we are thrilled she's coming to us from Cincinnati Public. So she's had many years, five years or so, at Sensay Public. And um, so we, she also had time at Ohio Department of Education and working with Batel. So those are all great foundation points related to data that she can help us grow and grow our administrators in that role. And then who is in the back? Okay, Abigail, welcome. And as Levanda said, she's gonna be fourth grade at North. So we, we really like that our, the new staff that can attend, come to the board meeting so that you can have a face with the names and we just wanna welcome all of you. We are thrilled that you are now a fighting owl, so, thank you.
Welcome.
And I just wanna give a shout out to our alumni band. They did a fantastic job yesterday. Ms. Ellis and Ms. Bryant were there and it was just a joy listening to them. And Joe did all the technology. Um, Mr. Hinkle was there and the auditorium is actually named for him. He did an amazing job. I was shocked that they said he started teaching in Mount Healthy in nineteen sixty. And so he has been retired for a while, but took our band back in the seventies and eighties all over the world. He went to Europe several times, he went to China. He's been, I appreciated that he came over to the board office and spent some time with me, just telling me about the history of the band. And we had, you know, I was in China for a while, so we connected over that point. But just amazing, amazing, the different things that our band did. So that legacy, I think, is so important and the concert was wonderful. So good turnout, really, the whole auditorium was filled. Um, it had been canceled the last two years because of COVID, so I'm really excited that we are able to start moving back and including all of those traditions that we have had in the past. So great job with the alumni band. Here are just some informational items. There are several grants that have been received by Mount Healthy. This time of year, we start getting a lot of different grants, so I won't read each and every one of them, but they're listed there. The second informational item deals with orphan tanks and I'm going to ask Gary to talk a little bit about this. This is an issue that happened back before the buildings were built and we inherited this issue. Apparently, there were some tanks from the business that was there in the past, so I'm gonna let Gary come and
Hey, there we go. Uh, so we found out, uh, we had a company in, um, that kind of made us aware that this has been an ongoing, uh, issue, uh, that we would kinda like to resolve. Uh, this has been going on since two thousand and seven. Uh, when we purchased a property here at Mount Healthy, uh, we purchased it from a company that, uh, I believe it was a paper mill company and
Standard.
Standex, that's correct. Uh, underneath, they had three tanks, um, that were, um, transporting fuel, uh, to kind of, of course, fuel their machinery. Uh, when Mount Healthy purchased the property, um, we did go in and remove those tanks. Um, and then, of course, we built the high school and the middle school and then the parking lot. Where the tanks are located right now, uh, we actually built the bus garage and the parking lot on top of the tanks. Um, however, we've got documentation, courts documentation from two thousand eight, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fifteen, and now here, uh, two thousand twenty-two, uh, that states on our end, we did remove the tank, of course, before we went in and put the parking lot and the high school up. However, there was a gentleman, the engineer that was overseeing this part of the project, went in, had the company go in, removed the tanks, but passed away prior to submitting the documentations to the courts. So the courts have all the documentation that says we did everything we were supposed to do on our end, but they don't have what they call the closure paperwork. Now, because it's been, uh, so many years, we now have to prove, uh, not that they've been removed, but that there is no, um, there are no chemicals, uh, soil, we're gonna have to take soil samples. So we've got a company that's gonna come in, they'll bore three holes, three big holes on the outside of the parking lot. Within the three holes, they're gonna collect two samples from each, so a total of six samples. They're gonna bore all the way down until they, what they call strike water. They've gotta get a little bit of water in there, uh, so they're going down, going down about twenty-five feet, twenty-five to twenty-six feet, in order to collect samples of soil and water, send to the lab for us to verify, we have nothing under there as far as any harmful chemicals or compounds. Once we get that, uh, information back from the lab, they sign off on it, we sign off on it, we submit it, uh, ask closure paperwork to kinda be done with this ordeal and we can move forward.
So originally, they wanted us to actually drill through our parking lot. Now they are not asking that, they are asking for us to drill at the edge of the parking lot?
Yes, based on, they're thinking on the edge of the parking lot, we'll give them a accurate count on, um, they have all their math, right? Uh, but their algori, their algorithms basically state that along the sides of the parking lot, we will be able to collect what is needed. Without, originally, it was we may have to go through, uh, the maintenance garage and the bus garage, which was, that's a whole nother issue.
And originally, in our parking lot, they wanted a large hole and then we would've had to fill back in that hole, right in the middle of our parking lot. So that is
Yes.
great that they have agreed to move it to the edge of the parking lot.
Twenty-five deep, about, they're saying about, uh
Like the size of a sewer grate.
Exactly.
But if that was in the middle of our parking lot or bus garage, you know, that could be a problem.
Prior to August. That's true. Hope, we won't have to go that direction, hopefully. Any questions?
And if they find that there is something down there, we are responsible then, I guess, to
To remove it. But they are very, they're pretty sure, pretty confident they were removed. We just don't have the paperwork, or the courts don't have the paperwork that says everything was signed off, signed, sealed, delivered type deal. Any questions?
Yeah, we'll pray on it.
Absolutely.
That's right.
Pull all that out of there, three of them.
Yes.
Could cost a lot of money.
Yes. Well, that's an option. In fact, there's another district that, uh, we work with, that's how they were able to fill theirs with the sand. You're right, there's a compound and sand, they fill it to the top. That becomes a, as long as the city, your local county, um, they're okay with that, then you can go in and do that. But as they're saying, this situation, the whole tank was removed. We just have to verify when they removed everything, there wasn't any leakage, any this, any, anything that can be harmful, uh, in the soil. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. We, as an informational item, we have signed a smart city service agreement to provide public Wi-Fi in, around the early learning center. So that's another port that we're adding to add more service in that area. So they have been working on that. I wanted just to briefly talk about culinary arts. I had emailed the board, um, a potential diagram. So we did receive ESER funds that can be used, it's grant money, that can be used on anything that is really involved in student engagement. So some of the things that we have used our money on, we used it to hire a lot of new teachers, to lower the class sizes, especially in our lower grades up to third grade. And all of those classes are fifteen or less because we're using that money to try to help with that. One thing that we wanna be careful of is not to use all of the money on, for instance, hiring staff, because when that grant money is gone, we, you know, how are we gonna pay for that? So working with Becky, we looked at how many we could hire so that they could continue, you know, to work in the district. Um, changing HVAC, we upgraded all of the air systems, the air handling systems in all of our buildings. They did an error analysis and it, it was fairly low. And so we, it was in the seventies, eighties, something like that. So we replaced it with some more efficient air and filtering and now it's in the high nineties. So that makes us feel great that our staff, you know, they are breathing clean air as they work with our students and our students are work, are breathing clean air. One thing that we have expanded, when we received the ESER funds, the grant money from ESER, we did a survey of our district and we asked the students, what are some areas that you would like to see us develop? We added a lot of electives at the high school based on what they shared with us and we did pay for those staff members with our ESER funding. Some of that included adding sign language as a foreign language option, uh, the fiber arts program, and then we used grant money to buy the equipment that was needed for that program. But by far, the area that our students wanted to have more opportunities, we're in the area of culinary arts. So this year, Chef Potter worked with our students, did an amazing job. Um, really, he's a, he does a lot with mastery learning where students can continue to keep on working till they, whatever skill you're talking about, whether it's knife skills or meats or whatever it is, you reach mastery because that's what you really want to see. So this year, after his classes were all full, all the scheduling, we had over four hundred requests to be in his class after we had filled it. So in talking with our students, again, they really want the opportunity. So we looked, we have been looking at a lot of different things to use for our ESER money and I would love for us to look and examine expanding our culinary arts program. I sent the PowerPoint and if the board approves and we move in that direction, we would be adding a culinary arts lab right at the ma, the event entrance. And Chef Potter is an adjunct for Cincinnati State, so the students that continue in the program will be earning credits with Cincinnati State as well as their high school credits. So that is a big advantage to them. He is, um, a proctor in several culinary certifications. Serves, say, for the food handling and then the manager and so he will be able to do those certifications. In addition, there are two plans in what I sent to the board. One included what we're calling a banquet area. I would recommend that we build that at the same time, that would be right across. That could be used for any type of gathering like our Hall of Fame. It also could be used, um, when we have our retirement reception. Or like we did yesterday at the alumni band, they served ice cream afterwards. That could all be set up. As a district, we do not have any space large enough to do professional development with everyone at one time, so that could be utilized for district-wide professional development as well as an opportunity for our community. So if our community wanted to rent out the space for a family gathering or something like that, they could go through Gary's department, rent out that space and then, of course, we would give them the option of hiring our culinary students to cater that for them. So we are, I'm very excited at the potential that this would give our district. I think it would, um, push along our mission of personalizing education and equity and everything that we've talked about. And it is an expense that once it's built, you don't have to build it a second time. So it's not an ongoing expense. It also would open up some classrooms in the high school. We are totally full in the high school, so that would take, there are two classrooms that are upstairs that are made for culinary. We would be able to use those classrooms in another way. So I just wanted to bring some information about the project and if the board is open to exploring it, the next step would be for immersion, construction, to put together what they called a hard proposal. And in the next board meeting or in August, they would, um, take, start taking us through that process. So questions or anything about that?
The, uh, the, I already forgot what you were calling it, the, the space for the events.
The ban, I just said banquet, but
Um, how big would that be? What would the capacity be?
Two hundred.
Okay.
So that's pretty large. And we also, like I said, would have screens around so that we could use it for professional development. But the, the diagram that they sent to me showed capacity for two hundred. So, yeah.
It'd be really nice.
All one level. And it would be right where you come in at the event entrance and there would be a door, actually, that would then go on into the auditorium. So you'd have the auditorium, that hallway, and then the banquet or event center would be right there. So it would all be connected and what's also nice about it, we considered renovating the kitchen, but then we don't have that option of the event center. And if the public wanted to rent it, they're not really going into the school building. You know, they can rent that area, they can have their gathering, but it's, it's not inside of our building. So I think this will be a great addition to our district. Other questions? Yeah, that's me, I'm always like, can we, how soon, how soon can we get started? So, and the nice thing, even their high, they gave a range of low amount, high amount. Um, the high amount, we have enough grant money for that. It's about all my grant money for that area, but it, we do have the money for that, so that's good. I do wanna note, construction costs are astronomical right now. They are, you know, Immersion said that in the past, if they were quoting something out, they would quote about two hundred and fifty per square foot and that was a little bit high. Now they're doing four hundred and fifty and they're not sure that they can do it for that. So the cost, if people are looking at it, they may have a little bit of a sticker shock because I did. The wonderful thing is that is not general fund money, that is grant money. So that's not coming out of our general fund. So we are excited about that and excited to, not only to provide the opportunity, but also just another advantage for our students because this is what our students are saying they want. The classes would expand to all types of things and, you know, people who are really interested could go through the whole chef program, so we are really excited about that.
Well, it seems like we could also have, I don't know, maybe you've discussed this, like some crossover things where chemistry classes go, like for a week and learn about the chemistry of food.
I love that, yeah.
Things like that.
That's a great, yes, we could do that. And as a, another side to it, once we get everything built, we could have a, a second instructor come in from Sensay State to focus on the business aspect, so they could actually hold classes in the event center because a lot of the classes don't deal with cooking. You know, it's making a budget and starting a restaurant, what do you need to do? So we could have two different aspects of culinary arts going at the same time. So I think they, Gary, working with Immersion, has done a great job getting this together and that will be, um, the project that we, that I'm gonna recommend as we get more information for us to move forward with.
Are you thinking that somewhere down the road you could do for adults?
Culinary, we definitely could. We could offer evening classes for adults, that's another great, I love, yes. And Bryant, Chef Potter would be very open to that. So we could, you know, I think anything we can do to give our community more opportunities is the direction we want to go. The other part that Immersion is working on, they haven't got the full proposal completed, is completing district office with an elevator and renovating the third floor. And so, that is the other project that eventually I'll be bringing some drawings and proposals to as well. Any other questions? All right. Conker Construction will be donating the cost of filling three hundred book bags with school supplies to North Elementary. Good job, North Elementary. So, this year, our back-to-school event will be the Friday before school starts, which is the twelfth of August and it will go from three to seven P M. One thing that we're doing that's a little bit different than last year, we are filling up book bags specific to grade levels. So, if I'm in a first grade and I'm supposed to have certain supplies, we will put out a link where the students can sign up for a book bag and they will get the book bag that has all of the supplies for first grade. So, we'll put their name on it. The church across the street has been great, Pastor Washington. They are buying us a thousand book bags. So, we are very appreciative of our partnership with Pastor Washington. He is ordering them even in red and black, so we are happy to get that. And then, we were moving towards the buildings, trying to get those filled. Not for every kid in the building, but a certain number, you know, like fifty per first grade, second grade at North, the same thing at South. And then, the students who sign up can get that. And then, we will have extra book bags. Some other churches are going to bring book bags with supplies. So, if you don't sign up, you can get a book bag. It may not have everything that you need for that. Well, Lisa Smith had a contact and she reached out and shared with Conker Construction and they offered to buy all the supplies for them to fill those book bags. So, we are very appreciative of that donation and that our students are going to just be able to start the year in an amazing way. This year, at the back-to-school event, we're even reaching out to local barbers and hairstylists, getting coupons so that student, you know, they can get the coupon and go get their back-to-school haircut. And then, through a grant, through Good Sports, we have been able to get a lot of shoes, sneakers. And so, we're going to have some available that if you need some shoes to start the school year, we will have shoes available and they will be able to get that. So, it'll be a fantastic event and we're really looking forward to it.
So, this is like the one that we had right out here in the parking lot?
Yes.
What was the date you said?
The twelfth, it's Friday, eight twelve, and it will be from three P M to seven P M. And we do have some other, you know, some other churches that are going to be partnering with us to just, you know, serve food. There'll be food there, hamburgers, hot dogs, water, other types of drinks. I'm not sure, it'll depend on what people donate. But, you know, just a time to come out, get some things you need and for us just to serve our community. You know, reach out and try to start the year the way that we want it to. So, we are really excited about that. All right. Three P M to seven. And all of the schools will be represented, all of the principals will be. It's another time where they can meet their students, pass out a book bag, you know, get to know. And this does not replace open house. There will be the traditional open house in each building. Principals will be sending out those dates. So, this is just a community event and then you will have that opportunity to be at the open house and meet the teacher and all of those types of things. So, we're excited. Lots of great stuff that's happening. Okay. Item B is the recommendation to file a consolidated continuous improvement plan, C C I P funding for the year twenty twenty-three. The filing of the consolidated continuous improvement plan application permits the local education agency, Mount Healthy City School District, to submit one application for Title One Part A, Improving Basic Programs, Title Two A, Supporting Effective Instruction, Title Three, Language Instruction for English Learners, Title Three, Immigrant, Title Four, Student Support and Academic Enrichment, I D E A B, Special Education, I D E A B, E C S E, or Early Childhood Special Education, and expanding opportunities for each child grant in lieu of separate applications for each program. And this is something we do each year.
Do we have a motion?
Summit.
Do you have any questions? Do we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Item C is the recommendation to adopt a resolution of participation in the following programs for F Y twenty twenty-three. Title One Part A, Title One, School Quality Improvement, Title Two A, Title Three, Language Instruction for English Learners, Title Three, Immigrant, Title Four, Special Education Part B, I D E A, E S, E C S E, Early Childhood Special Education, High Schools That Work, Comprehensive Literacy State Development, Expanding Opportunities for Each Child, ESER and A R P ESER.
Do we have a motion to accept?
Bryant, Ms. Bryant. Great.
Do you have any questions? Do we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item D is the recommendation to adopt a resolution authorizing in lieu of transportation payments for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. This is the last list. We've tried to do some throughout the year, but that is attached.
Is it really? Yeah, I would say that, but I never see it.
It's, it's under this, it's the, this tab. The red tab.
Oh, I haven't read that.
We don't.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
Online, yeah.
Sent through email.
We got your attachment Friday.
Oh, okay. Well, I hadn't been in that thing. Okay. Do we have a motion to accept?
Bryant, Ms. Bryant.
Second.
Ms. Anderson.
Do you have any questions? Do we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item E is the recommendation to approve the renewal of the Ohio School Plan, O S P Insurance Policy. This policy covers district-wide insurance for cyber, property, violence, auto liability, and pollution. It will be effective July first, twenty twenty-two, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Summit.
Bryant, Bryant.
Okay, um, you got any questions? If not, do a roll call.
Mrs. Anderson? Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore? Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item F is the recommendation to approve the Hamilton County Education Service Center Agreement for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year.
Do we have a motion?
Summit.
Oh. Kilgore and Turner.
Any questions? Is this anything specific?
Um, it's what we normally use them for services. We have different types of aides. Sarah, do you want to expand a little bit on all the different nurses?
Okay. Okay, do we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item G is the recommendation to approve the annual contract for services with Hamilton Clermont Cooperative, H C C, for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. This is our technology provider.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Summit.
You are you seconding him?
Okay. Bryant.
Y'all have any questions? If not, do we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Item H is the recommendation to approve the continuation of the System Preventative Maintenance and Full Coverage Extended Warranty by M Corps. And this is what, um, covers all of the, like HVAC and systems in our building. Total cost is forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, can we have a motion to accept?
Mrs. Anderson?
Ms. Anderson.
Y'all have any questions?
Summit.
Kim and Anderson. I mean, Kilgore, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
So...
Kilgore and Anderson.
Yeah.
Y'all have any questions? If not, give us a roll call.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore? And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And item I is recommendation to approve a one-year contract with Peck and Hannaford and Briggs for preventative maintenance, I guess, for just HVAC. So, the one before Gary, what was, it included? And the, and this was? Okay. So, the preventive maintenance for HVAC. Total cost, this does include the E L C, ninety-five thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Could I have a motion to accept?
Kilgore and Bryant.
Kim, I mean, Kilgore and Bryant. Any questions? Do we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Item J is the recommendation to approve Graham Reed Lock and Key, L L C, for the installation of new locks and keys at North and South Elementary. The cost is seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-five cents.
Do we have a motion? Two seconds.
Bryant.
Y'all have any questions?
I do. Um, the doors themselves, they have an issue.
Emmett, could you use the microphone?
Yeah, and there's going to have a mail shooting and I believe it's tactics or something. And all the doors were drawn. Apparently, there's no sound device, so both are jarred, the doors were jarred.
We do, yes. Because often, they go off. And so, Gary and, we do have that. Yes.
Okay, but nothing here in the office?
We do.
Oh, yeah, each building.
Each building. Our office in each building, so if a door is ajar, our alarm goes off and it tells which door.
Not this year, but last year. Some of the doors had been jarred. And I walked through the doors.
Wow.
Out of doors?
Wow.
Yeah.
That Cincinnati alarm came through this year and took care of all that. And, you know, Mr. Kilgore brings up a big point. This is something that we do constantly have to be just vigilant about, that not propping doors and when that alarm goes off, immediately going and closing that door. Very important, yeah, very important.
Okay, do we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Item K, I am very excited about. This is the recommendation to approve two hundred and forty Promethean boards from C D W Education. The total cost is six hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars and this is paid for with grant money. So, when our buildings were built, the smart boards that were put in are still there. The technology has changed quite a bit in ten years and we can't even get some of the parts anymore. They use the old projectors. So, we are, we allotted part of our ESER funding for technology. We've used part of it for devices and this would allow every teacher in the district to have a board that is up to date. One of the amazing features I love about the new boards, if a teacher has something up on the board and our students have their devices, it has a function called mirroring. So, whatever's on the smart board also shows up on their individual device. So, that, you know, eliminates people trying to see, you know, is that right, is that wrong? But this board is just being released and it's actually at the convention for technology right now in New Orleans and they are just releasing that. And because of our relationship with Promethean, they are going to supply that for us and we will be a pilot school for their new board. So, I am really excited about this.
Do we have a motion to accept?
Summit.
Bryant.
Kim.
Do you have any questions? Okay, do we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item L is the recommendation to approve the purchase of a fundraising and communication management platform subscription with R N L Digital Giving Platform. The total cost is sixty thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. This will also be grant funded. This helps us to, we're, we're really making a push for our alumni, getting them in the database so that they can know what great things are happening in the school. It also ties in with Lori Daniels, who is our Chief Advancement Officer. As people give donations to her, this goes into the system and it keeps pushing out information related to their donation so that hopefully, they will continue to donate to us. So, this falls under the area of engagement and so, that's how we're able to use grant money for that.
Okay, can we have a motion to accept?
Second.
Anderson.
Do you have any questions? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item M is the recommendation that Mount Healthy School District participate in the student-teacher program with Wilmington College during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Do we have a motion to accept?
Summit.
Anderson.
Second.
Do you have any questions? Do we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item N is the recommendation to adopt a new dress code for all Mount Healthy City School District students, effective with the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And we did have different groups come together to look at dress code. I believe Lavanda gave a copy for everyone. We have tried to make it very easy to read as well as giving examples of the dress code. Students were involved as well as some parents to look at the language and it was continued to be revised until we felt like we, we got it to a place that it was very easy to understand. So, we are recommending this as the new dress code policy.
Summit.
Y'all would quit that thing. Um, I have a question.
Yes.
Is, is one of these shoes in here the flip-flops?
Flip-flops are not allowed. Pass that.
That's, that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah. At the bottom, there are things, clothing with like a red circle through it. Yep. Any shoe that does not have a back on it. So, flip-flops, slides, they're not permitted in the school. No. All shoes must have a strap around the back. So, if, if they don't, they're not permitted. If they, well, if they have a strap and they're covering their foot, you know, they could.
So, the shoes I got on top, it wouldn't be allowed?
Can't see your shoes, but, but maybe not.
They're full back to them.
Oh, then that is true.
Yeah.
I wear a mirror wear. But I ain't going to be running.
That's true.
Anybody, any other questions?
Uh, well, not a question, but I just wanted to say.
Uh, well, not a question, but I just wanted to say, Ms. Anderson and I were both part of the committee that discussed this and I just thought it was a really smooth and seamless process. Everybody was kind of all on the same page and if anyone had concerns about one thing or another, we just like discussed it and came to agreements on everything. And I think everyone, at least on the committee, was really happy with where we ended up with this.
Great, that's what I love to hear.
That's a good thing.
Technically, no, but did students wear shorts before? Yes.
They did wear them.
Yeah. They would wear them and call them capris, but they were not capris. That's what they would say they were. Capris were.
Okay. Do we have a roll call please?
Right, she's not finished.
You got another question, Kim?
I just wanna make a comment. I just don't think that changing for one dress code system is gonna really solve. I think it's still gonna have severe problems because I can see with these shorts now, now you're gonna have the shirt, shorts, they're probably gonna show jeans and whatnot. So you, you're changing for one problem area to another. I think it's just, this is not really gonna solve our issue and I think we need to have some... Game plan before school starts on what we're actually gonna do. They can't, they can't continue to decide what they wanna wear, um, when we do have a dress code. And, um, I mean, like I'm looking at the girl's skirt here in the picture. To me, that's too short. And, um, if this, if these are the physicals we're sending out, I'm sure you might get something that might be much shorter than that also. What are we gonna do?
And the, that's a great point. And the administration has been meeting on this topic. We do have, we have different types of spirit wear that we do have at every building for them to wear. Once it is board approved, we will be having a big push out of acceptable, what is acceptable, what is not, along with parent meetings that will be happening in August to go over the dress code again. And, you know, just giving examples, showing pictures, talking about it and having parents act, actually sign off and commit to support the new dress code for the district. So we are planning a, a big push on that. Well, we have a virtual school that they could be part of, yeah. Which is another advantage. We now, you know, will have an option for parents that just really are like, I can't, I don't wanna support that or I don't want to buy other clothes. They would have that option. But the bigger thing, if we know that there's a financial need, we do have neediest kids of all money and we work very hard to help our families to have the clothing that is appropriate. So if it is a financial situation, then we're gonna do everything we can to help your child get clothes that they feel comfortable in, that also meet our dress code. If it is a situation where it's, which would be the same as the uniform situation, just you're not gonna tell me what to do, that's a different type of conversation, but we will have that conversation.
And I know to, to their defense, to buy, select, select, regular select, because I've been on the requirements, but I have a much, it is hard to find them.
Yeah.
It really is hard to find them. Um, but there are other options that they can wear too. But, um, I don't know, I just think you just need to be ready. I don't...
You're, you're absolutely right. Consistency is essential and, you know, we had, we did have buy-in from parents as well as students. We did a lot of surveys during, at the junior, senior high level, some at the elementaries about culture and climate and continually the uniform issue came up. So we are responding in the voice, you know, to the voice of our students. But when we have those issues, just like any other discipline issue, you know, we will work with the families and help them understand our expectation, do what we can to help them meet that expectation and then react accordingly.
Well, and I think also, and I think this came up in the committee meeting that we had, that it seems like in the past, it was sort of on a teacher-by-teacher basis. Some teachers just didn't wanna spend the time discussing it and so they would let anything slide. And then the teachers who said, no, the rules are the rules, I'm going to enforce them, were the bad guys because, well, this teacher doesn't and this teacher doesn't. And I think, you know, it, it does need to be very much stressed, like this was in response to concerns the students had.
Right.
They didn't wanna keep having the uniform. We're giving them a lot more options here. But, you know...
Right.
The, the payoff for that is that we are gonna be enforcing it. It's not going to be on a classroom-by-classroom basis. The teachers have to be on board and it shouldn't really be up to the teachers. It should be administrators. Um, it's, the teachers don't need another job. They don't, and that's why we, we didn't go with like skirts have to be so many inches
Right.
above the, you know, below the, because they don't need to be standing there with a ruler every day, monitoring what the kids are wearing. So, uh, I think, I think we hopefully have a nice balance between we're being responsive to what you guys said you wanted, but that means, okay, you have what you want.
Right.
You, you now don't get to not go along with this.
Right, take ownership of, of it.
I think that's the thing for me. I, I do agree that there's another kind of course that may be opened, but the difference is there were consequences before on the students because it was their burden, it was the family's burden. We were putting these rules on them that were oftentimes difficult for the families to keep up with and the students were paying consequences of potentially not being able to find those clothes, not being able to afford those clothes. If the students now have a choice in what to wear and they're getting help from us to make sure that they can fit into this, now these are consequences of their own choices if they're being, you know, pulled out of class so that they can change and what have you. And I think that that, that for me is the biggest thing for the students, teaching them how to make good decisions before they leave the house and not just be able to shift that blame on, well, we couldn't, we couldn't do this or that because of these rules that were inflicted on us. Giving them a feeling of control and ownership of those decisions.
You're, you're saying that I also feel like students, you know, what, you know, was supposed to wear as well as being. And if there weren't issues, which, um, they were all expected to help. But they chose to still break the rules, you know? I understand that teachers may not have all been consistent, but actually already started with students, but they pulled out their cards and let them decide if they need to walk with it.
It's true.
Anything else? I'm not gonna voice my opinion. Uh, roll call please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item O is the first reading for recommended Mount Healthy Board of Education by law and policy changes. These we continue to update, use of credit cards, weapons, and wellness. And that's just information. The next item is the consent agenda. We do have a lot because it is that time of year, but I do just want to commend, um, our HR Director, Dr. Ogden. He has really been proactive in getting people to apply and processed. And so all of our principals as well have been working very hard to make sure that we had everything in place for the June meeting. Hopefully, we will not have as many in July, or any in July. But that's many different positions on the consent agenda.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
You have any questions? Okay, can we have a roll call please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
And that's the end of my report.
Okay. But I don't think we had any special orders. Okay, open discussion on the strategic plan.
Actually, before we get to that, I'd, I'd like a different open discussion that's gonna be really fast. In the name of historical accuracy, correct me if I'm wrong Becky, but our new buildings are no longer ten years old. Aren't they about twelve years old or so at this point?
Thank you, yeah, you're right.
We keep calling them new and we keep saying ten years, but we've been saying that for a while.
They're new to us.
But we've been saying ten years for two years also. Time has continued to go forward. Yes, that is true. With the strategic plan, um, when I started in the district, the strategic plan was education destination and it's a great plan. It really is. But as with everything, it's good to just take some time, look at it. If nothing else, the board members need to be updated in the back, but to, um, just examine it. And part of the role of the board is to really give input on that. As the executive management team, as well as all of our administrators, the instructional vision, the four different areas, I think are, are really perfect. I don't know that they even need to be tweaked. One thing, so the first one, diverse, high-quality academic programs designed to maximize each student's potential. Second, a highly skilled and innovative professional staff who reflects our community values. Third, a safe, clean, and caring environment where discipline and respect are held in the highest regard. Fourth, an atmosphere and attitude that welcomes students and their families and community involvement. One thing that we have talked about and I would love the board's input, in the past, we had three objectives and we combined some. We would like to maybe expand and have four objectives so that we can really dig and go deeper into each of our areas of our instructional vision. But this is just to give you a copy and what I would love and, you know, please, as the board, tell me how you want to approach this. Take some time and read over it. Look at some different things that are in here. If you see something that needs updated and maybe we could have a, a work session where we come together and we talk about some different things that you see that may need to be tweaked. And our goal is that we would roll out education destination two-point-O or revise, whatever we wanna call it, at our August meeting so that everyone is clear about, you know, our focus area and we are all moving in the right direction.
Sum it. Okay, uh, next?
Um, I, I also have another thing too.
Oh, okay.
Uh, while we're updating things, uh, the board has a board handbook, which we've had for quite a while. It was written, I think it was updated once, like when it was a year or two old, but hasn't been since then. I don't know that anything in it needs to change, but I would like, um, either the whole board to look over it altogether or if they would rather not do it that way, uh, maybe just a couple of board members go through it and then present whatever changes they want to the board. I, I worked on the original one. I'd be willing to work on, uh, just seeing if we need to tweak anything. So if any, what do you guys think? You wanna do it all as a group or just have like two board members work on it?
Well, if we all gonna have an opinion, then we should all walk, work on it together.
Okay. So that could be another...
Yeah, we could have a work session time where we would look at strategic plan and the board handbook.
And just for informational, if we have a work session, if it's the whole board, it's still a board meeting. It's still open to the public.
Right.
It's not behind closed doors. So that'll be true for the, for the strategic plan. It'll be true for this. Okay.
So do we wanna set a time? I mean, our next meeting is July the eleventh. We could do it...
Let's do the strategic plan and get that all done first.
Okay.
This can wait and we can, we can talk about it.
And would the board prefer, if we want to do it on the eleventh, before or after the board meeting or a different day? Whatever you guys want?
I'm here on the eleventh, yeah.
We are open to that.
Well, July's been good for you, isn't it?
No, July's good, yeah, because the, the meeting date has been changed.
Right, the eleventh.
From the, from the eighteenth to the eleventh. I can make that.
Did, did we need to vote on that?
No.
Okay.
We're just gonna do it at a board meeting, not unless you want another day.
No, that's fine.
Okay, we can do it at the end if you want.
After?
I think that makes sense.
Or would you like it in the front? Ms. Anderson, I'm asking you because you're working.
I know, I'm just looking at my calendar. I think, um, I could do it anytime after, I could be here anytime after four-thirty, I think.
Okay. So would you guys prefer to start four-forty-five and that would, that should get plenty of time?
Okay.
Okay, great.
So on the twelfth, we'll come here at four-forty-five.
At five.
Oh, eleven, I'm sorry.
At five, right?
Four-forty, oh, five?
At five.
Five, okay. Five o'clock. Yeah.
Five forty-five?
All right. Five o'clock, five o'clock.
Y'all make of y'all mind now. So that'd give us a whole hour to work on this.
I really don't think there's gonna be that much. We are meeting with the administrators. I'll email any suggestions they have to you ahead of time so you can look over that.
Okay, so our regular board meeting for Monday, July the eleventh will start at five P.M.
No, let's, let's save the handbook for a completely different meeting. I think, I think this'll be plenty.
Not unless you wanna spend a lot of time with us.
Well, and it may only ta, that's the thing. I mean, it, it may only take ten minutes. So we don't wanna...
I understand.
Set aside an hour, start early with the handbook and then say, oh, yeah, we're done and we got fifty minutes to kill till the meeting starts or... Let's just wait.
We could talk. Okay, uh, anything else to come before the board? Okay, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Sum it.
All in favor?
Aye.
At seven-twelve, yep.
Great, thank you. Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you.